I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order for September 23, 2021. It is five after seven, six after seven in the evening.
All right, thank you. I'll repeat that. We're going to call the Planning Commission meeting for Havreford Township to order for September 23, 2021. Our first order of business is going to be to call the roll.
Mr. Capuzzi, Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Ms. Dove.
Here.
Mr. Channa.
Here.
Mr. Fior Di Mondo. Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Okay, so our first order of business, I'm sorry, I believe our next order of business is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance if we want to do that, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty, gain, justice for all. Because Angelo is out tonight, I am doing this for, in the last 15 or 16 years, this is my third time. So I want to apologize if I make any procedural errors and if anybody catches me on anything, please just say, hey Chuck, hold on, give me a chance here, okay? We are, our first order, our first real order of business is 111 to 115 East County Line Road, Minor Subdivision Plan Review, revisited from August 23, DN Investments LLC. Who is here to speak?
Good evening, Dennis O'Neill, Herbert McCumbey's office.
Dennis, we have a review from Havreford Township, from Chuck Faulkner and from Penonis. Do you, would you like to go through that as the first order of business?
I would, I just have a couple of quick items I want to brief the Planning Commission on before we go through that letter.
Okay.
The first item is that the plan has been revised to include sidewalk and curb along the frontage of the property in County Line Road. We understand we will require highway occupancy permit from PennDOT to construct that. We are proposing a pedestrian easement along there to have the sidewalk in since there's not quite enough right-of-way there to get it into. And pedestrian easement would be a perpetual easement that would grant the public right-of-way through there. So it would act as a right-of-way, but only for pedestrians to use the sidewalk. And the sidewalk would be maintained, in essence, as a similar in other areas of township by the property owners. There were several waivers requested previously regarding trees and the number of trees. We have revised the landscape plan, we've revised the plan, the number of trees being removed so that we can comply with the tree ordinances. We'll no longer be requesting waivers for the number of trees that were to be provided. Mr. Durazio appeared before the, this is September, or the August Tree Commission. They asked for some revisions to the plans which have been made and he will return to the Tree Commission with those revisions, I believe, next Monday is their meeting. So, we are now only requesting three waivers. One is the waiver for additional right-of-way to be dedicated. The state highway right-of-way is 33 feet wide and typically PennDOT does not accept additional right-of-way that isn't used for their purposes. So, it wouldn't do us any good to, it would just be a continuing offer of dedication. And therefore, that, we feel, justifies the request for that waiver. We're requesting a waiver from the streetlight requirement. There is a streetlight currently at the intersection of the drive to Polo Grounds and County Line Road. It is on the north side of the road. There is one approximately 250 feet to the west, further down County Line Road on the north side. So there is adequate streetlight existing for the site. Therefore, we believe that that does not warrant additional streetlight. And the third waiver that we're requesting from Section 164-4A is to allow this plan to be considered as preliminary final, so a one-step process. So I can, I can run through these comments rather quickly. As you can tell, most of the township engineers' comments have been addressed. The zoning comment, number one, zoning, the garage was existing non-conforming on Lot 3 with regard to setback from the property or the side yard. It is our intention to modify the existing garage to make it conforming.
Right.
Conforming in size and in setback. So those...
That's a will comply.
That's a will comply. Number two, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Sewage Facilities, modular exemption there too is a will comply and that process has been started through DEP. Number six, as I previously indicated, we will, we have revised the plans to address Tree Commission questions and we will return to the Tree Commission to seek their final recommendation. And number seven has to deal with open space. There was a question about accessibility of the open space. We are offering a fee in lieu of, rather than providing the open space. And we understand that should the township accept the fee in lieu of, the plan would have to be revised to remove the open space that's shown and it would also adjust the coverages on the property and stuff because those are netted out of the lots, but it would not necessitate any additional zoning approvals at that point.
So you will modify the plans?
Yes, should, should the, should the Board of Commissioners accept the fee in lieu of, the plans would be modified to remove the open space that's shown.
You notice number eight?
Number eight, yes, we're very close to one acre. The chairman asked last time if we would consider putting limit of disturbance fence in place and we agreed that we would do that. Number 12, the electric and gas service for Lot 2 are within drip line of trees, so we'll relocate those to get them out from under the drip line of the trees. We acknowledge that, number 14, and we'll comply with a soil and erosion drainage control permit for lots 1 and 2 and a BMP maintenance agreement contribution of $2,200 per lot and there are notes on the plan that acknowledge that. So we'll comply with 14 and 15. 16, as part of the Highway Occupancy Permit Plan submission, the engineer is asking us to confirm with PennDOT that they won't require additional right-of-way along County Line Road and we will comply with that. Number 20, I spoke to the engineer this afternoon, he pointed out to me the specific area on Lot 2 that he's concerned with. There are a couple ways to address that and probably the easiest way is to add an inlet at the edge of the driveway to help lower that area a little bit and get it, get it into the basin. So we will comply with that.
Are you comfortable with that, Chuck?
Like Dennis had said, we, we did discuss that this afternoon, that was one of the options I suggested to him in addition to a couple other things and, and yes, I'd be comfortable with another inlet there.
Number 21, of course, we will need a PennDOT permit, so the restoration details of County Line Road, we'll have to comply with the PennDOT requirements, so we will certainly comply with that comment. Number 25 and 26 are new comments. An accessible curb ramp, meeting the standards from PennDOT, will be required where it meets the entrance for the Polo Grounds. We're showing a handicap ramp there currently, but I believe that the comment is indicating that they don't believe it meets the current PennDOT standard, so we will address that as part of our HOP submission. And we, we will write and prepare and submit for recording the description of the pedestrian easement for the sidewalk.
All righty, I do, any, I guess we'll go through the board at this point and see if there, Chuck, do you have any other questions in regards to this?
No, I think Dennis has addressed everything that we had.
Okay. All righty, so what we're dealing with now is having each member of the board determine their sets of plans, so why don't we start at that end and then we'll go ahead and get each and every person's comments as they, if they have any at this point.
I guess my only comment was it was a bit disappointing to see that you didn't make any adjustments to the massing of the two new cookie cutter houses to better fit within the street and the neighborhood lot sizes that are along the street. That was my only additional comment.
We did look, I think the initial comment had to do with the garage front-centric house that was shown and we did look at essentially a mirror of the, of the site. The problem however is that putting the garage behind the house would require additional tree disturbance. And there's a significant buffer of trees between us and the Polo Ground in the back, which we choose, would like not to disturb that buffering. In addition to that, it would require a longer driveway, more impervious cover. More impervious cover would mean additional stormwater management, so the beds would get larger, which would in turn require more stormwater or more tree disturbance again. So, we believe that the houses that are there will be attractive, they'll be modeled to be compatible with the, with the neighborhood and will also do, do some good thing by saving some trees and reducing the stormwater management efforts for the site.
Yes, there was also a comment however, to look at possibly mirroring one of the houses so that both the driveways were side by side, sort of creating a courtyard appearance in the center between the two houses. That would help alleviate the look of having two cookie cutter houses right next to each other?
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with a PennDOT standard that requires a separation distance between driveways entering a state highway. Havreford Township doesn't permit a common driveway, so we can't put them together and then we have to maintain a distance on the state highway, which we're probably pretty close to just about where they're at now in order to get a permit for them.
You couldn't look at any other massing options that would perhaps make the two houses different?
Well, I mean, we think we've done our due diligence there and looked at, looked at other options for the lots. These are rather big lots, these houses are set back rather, rather far from the street so that they're not, they're not sticking out past any of the houses that are, that are on the street now. And again, with some landscaping and, and doing some things in the front, we, we think they're going to be compatible. We have looked at various other houses, but we think this is, is what the, what the site would, would best be suited for.
Okay, that's all I had.
Rob?
Sure. There's currently an inlet, there's currently a yard drain on Lot 2 on the western side of the basin closer to Lot 1. We talked about two options. One is to move that inlet closer to the driveway or add another inlet between the driveway and the basin and then play to get into that inlet. So, the engineer's concern is that there's not enough slope coming off the driveway to get the water conveniently to the yard drain. So what we're going to do is we're going to add another inlet here, provide a little more slope drop off of that inlet. So the water's going to end up going to the same place in the basin, just going to come off the driveway, be captured here in the yard drain and then additional water coming from other areas that we captured in this yard.
Okay, thank you. I do have to mention also that I agree in that the layout of these houses, I'm using the exact same term, as a cookie cutter image that I think is not deserving of this site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, do you want to go next? Maggie, do you want to go second to last? Would that be all right?
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks Chuck. So, yeah, I'm gonna immediately second the massing request, I thought that was a great comment. I was having the same objections when I was studying this. I was not present in the last presentation, but I also am objecting to what, to how this doesn't seem like it fits the character of the neighborhood. I would like to see that it more closely matches the layout and spacing of the neighborhood at the moment. I realize that may or may not be part of our purview, but I'm putting it on the record. I'm concerned also that the tree buffer between this property and the neighboring property is essentially being removed with this, with the third property on, or with the third house on that property. All of the ma, the massive trees that are in this area are on this property and you're removing them in order to put a house there and I don't, I don't think that that's the right thing to do in this neighborhood. The other thing that I'm, I'm, for future reference, I would really like to see the neighboring properties shown on a land development plan. You were talking about streetlights, sidewalks, they're not shown here and I think that would make a huge difference in being able to evaluate this and make sure that the community is aware of what you're planning on doing here, but...
If I may, there are no other sidewalks on a street in that area.
So what are you going to connect the sidewalk to?
I'm sorry?
What are you going to connect the sidewalk to?
It won't connect anything, but it's the township's requirement that we provide sidewalk and curb in a subdivision. We asked for a waiver and we were told at the last meeting that it was most likely impossible to get that waiver from the township. So we added sidewalk and curb as we were directed to do. You're correct, it's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Will the sidewalk get to the polo field?
It will get to the driveway of the polo field. We're only, we're only obligated to put it along the frontage.
May I add a comment at this point, which is that over the course of the last 10 or so years, as new properties are developed in areas where there have traditionally been no sidewalks, the township has strongly encouraged and wanted sidewalks to be included even though they appear initially to go to nowhere, but then as properties are sold, we add more and more sidewalks so that there is a safety issue, especially along County Line Road, which is a really busy street.
So by requiring this sidewalk here, we'll essentially be requiring, the sale of the neighboring property would have to provide a sidewalk?
Not necessarily, but if there's any kind of major changes done in any of the properties next door, then they'll be subject to it and if we don't do it now with this property, then the whole thing falls apart. Am I correct in making that comment?
You're correct. The Board of Commissioners have been very adamant that, that we continue to require sidewalks and curbs where, in land development subdivision where there are no current sidewalks and curbs.
I don't have any further comments right now.
Sure.
You also were including trees in the sidewalk?
We are removing trees to put the sidewalk in, that is correct.
How many trees are you removing? I'm, I'm looking at the Google, it looks like a lot.
There are three trees being removed to put the si, the sidewalk in.
And what is the, I'm not able to see what the distance is between the proposed curb and the end of the, and the side of the proposed sidewalk. So the, the distance from the proposed sidewalk to the proposed curb?
It's, it's four and a half feet, it's five feet to the face of the curb.
Sorry?
It's five feet to the face of the curb.
Including the sidewalk?
No, it's five feet, there's a five feet verge and then a five foot sidewalk.
How much grass between the sidewalk and the curb?
Five feet.
Five feet.
At the last meeting, there was some discussion in relation to the, the sidewalk. I, I understood that there was a suggestion you might go to the township to ask the Commissioners for relief from the sidewalk requirement, that it should come from the Commissioners rather than from this body. Is that still the intention of the property owner? Kelly?
Yes, so the way the process works is that they, the Land Development Subdivision application comes before this board for recommendation. That means recommendation on the waivers requested, on the plan itself, et cetera. It then goes to the Board of Commissioners and they're the ones who do make that final decision, which is why I expressed a minute ago that, that the board has been very adamant about not granting those waivers. So, to keep Mr. O'Neill and Mr. Falcone from having to do a revision, only to revise it again to show that sidewalk and curb, that's why I was expressing that to the Commissioner.
Maggie?
So, I know we spoke before at the last, at the last meeting, I had expressed my, to echo, hello, did I not? Thank you. I had mentioned this at the last meeting, but I also don't care for the massing and the prominence of the garage location. And I feel that there are ways to orient the garage so that it tucks behind the house instead of having a garage where your cars will be parking parallel to the street, so when you're walking down, all you'll see is the side of, side of cars and then a garage in the front. So my ask is, and I, I believe you showed us some architectural renderings before, but to, if, if this is the design that we're going to have built, to have some sort of architectural treatment in the front of the garage to look as much like the front of a house as possible and not like the side of a garage. So whatever kind of architectural treatments, porticoes, windows, something to make it look more like a house and not a garage. So I won't belabor that point, only in that I don't care for the, the non-mirror orientation. The other thing that I am interested in though is in terms of future development of these properties for property owners, I see that you have a small X on the back next to this deck. Is this going to be like a covered walkout patio and then small deck area? Are there going to be steps off of the deck into the backyard?
The, the Xed area is a covered entryway to the house. And then the deck or patio, depending on the grade, the grade change, but it's the intention that the deck or patio would be at grade and then if there were any steps, they'd be into the house from the deck or patio.
Okay, and so then given the location of the two stormwater facilities behind each of the houses, is there going to be then an easement, and forgive me if I asked this before, but is there going to be an easement over that area to preclude the future property owner from expanding that decker patio over that stormwater facility?
There's, there is not an easement per se that would prevent them from doing that, however, there is a stormwater and operations management agreement that is recorded and to expand that and cover that area between the house and the stormwater management area would include extra impervious, which would affect the stormwater management system. So therefore, it would require township approval at that point.
Do we know how much, maybe this is the question for Kelly and not to put you on the spot, do we know how much additional impervious cover could be added to these properties?
Are we asking how much additional can be added to meet the, before it violates the zoning ordinance or before it requires additional stormwater management facilities?
Both, please, if you know the answer.
R4, I, this site specifically, I don't know the square feet off the top of my head, but it does require, or it has a maximum impervious percentage of 45 coverage and the figure for storm management requirements and plans and review is 1,000 square feet.
Yep.
So if they were to, you know, add additional 1,000 square feet of impervious, if they were to, you know, obviously go anywhere, go above 45%, they would need a variance. And if they were to, you know, obviously try to cover any of those things, they should be caught upon a permit application.
Right, so be captured in permits and then you would tell them that they can't build anything right there?
Exactly.
But I'm assuming then they could behind, like in the, in the furthest part of the property, they could put a shed or plant whatever they want or fencing or anything like that?
Yes, so long as they, the Commissioners approve the fee in lieu of open space.
Correct, right.
Right.
So, yes, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that the fee in lieu is in effect here and so we have that, that open space areas removed from the lotted areas.
In that, in that situation, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, I'm just thinking of anything else that would cause concern for either Kelly or the future residents. Right, so then street trees and that. So, no, ultimately that, I think that summarizes all of the additional comments that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie, if I might just follow up on Kelly's comment, in, in the, in Chapter 78, erosion and sedimentation control and everything, there is a call out for, there must be, I believe it's a 15-foot wide access easement, I think it describes it as around the facility. So, you know, once you, once you come into that, close to that facility, like Kelly said, it's going to be called out and provided there's a, they have a plan submitted and everything, but just to give you an idea, that's probably what it is. It's a 15 feet or so around that facility that will remain undisturbed.
So then, so based on that additional information then, so that would actually come very close then to the, the rear of the house, correct?
I don't think so.
No, because the basin is...
That's fine, I mean, either way, it's going to...
I mean, the basin's 10 feet, so if you took the basin later next to it and another half a basin, you'd still have room between the back of the house and the...
The, the, the distance between the basin and the back of the house is about 32 feet.
32 feet, okay, okay, so they do have a little bit of room still to expand if they, if they so chose. Okay, thank you.
I wanted to let you know that I received from, as many of us I think did, hopefully all of us received, from Angelo Capuzzi who couldn't be here this evening, he's in Denver tonight with his family. But he gave us a set of requests, those requests were actually mirrors of what Chuck provided us already, so I'm not going to add his comments on again. And I understand the concern for the flavor of the community, I really and truly do. I'm just curious, and I'm going to ask a question, but I wasn't here at the last meeting I'm just curious, and I'm gonna ask a question, but I wasn't here at the last meeting and I apologize. I had a family emergency. Of the two houses, is there a reason why the driveway for the house that's on, that I'm looking at on the left side, couldn't be flipped and the two houses flipped back to back so that the driveways would be opposite each other, which would give them even more space between? And would provide an open area in the middle between the two properties? So if you catch what I'm saying. Instead of having the driveways on the same side of each house, is there, is there a green? Excuse me, I'm not ill, I just swallowed the wrong way. If you could flip one of the houses over to have it go the other direction, and I'm thinking of the first house.
Lot one.
The, to the left on the map, as I'm looking at it, if you could do that, then there would be more space between. It would give you a mirror look on the houses that would be opposite each other and it might just add, it would get, put the cars further apart that would be parking up in the area. And I'm just suggesting and it wouldn't have to change the design at all, it would just flip it. I mean, if it's feasible, would that be something that you could look at?
It does drop off as we start to get to the western edge of the property.
And that becomes a problem perhaps.
It'd be, it'd be more difficult to control the drainage so that it didn't leave the property at that point.
Well, if you can possibly just consider that, that's not something that I would put in a recommendation, but it is something that I think in the long run will increase the, the curb appeal to the properties and would probably also increase the value of the properties to the potential buyer. So it's just, I've been in this world for 40, 50 years now and I just look at things like that and they're small things, but sometimes they become too expensive, sometimes they're not. Other than that, I will, I would like to find out if there's anybody from the community who would like to speak. Thank you very much, Dennis. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be rude, I'm just not really good at this.
You're doing great.
Please, if you come up here and state your name and where you live and give us your opinion.
It's gonna be hard to talk through this. My name is Kathleen Case and I live at 121 County Line, right next door to this proposed development. And because I don't like to blindside people, I did talk with Joe earlier to let him know, of course, I hate the whole idea. Everybody who's got houses being built next to them when they've had an empty lot would hate the whole idea. I'm also losing all of the trees that I've been looking at for 42 years, including two signature cherry, weeping cherry trees that are iconic for the whole neighborhood. I understand what he is proposing is legitimately legal under the codes of the township and he has every right to build what he wants there. I too object to the cookie cutter notion. It is, this neighborhood is, every house is different in this neighborhood. They're mostly built in 1905, so they're older homes. There are five new homes that are built in the County Line Road area, all different, including the three even on Shamrock Lane that were built in the 80s. And one that's built across, of course, Lower Marion's across the street. Those houses also are all different. The road is characterized by, yes, there are no sidewalks, but most people have planned beautiful things along there. The grass goes down to the road, there is a very wide piece of pavement there that almost everybody walks down when they're walking down. This sidewalk would be an aberration in the neighborhood. It's the sidewalk to nowhere. And my concern is, it will have a curb. There are no storm drains on County Line Road anywhere. It's a river, as we saw this afternoon in the rain. The water will hit the sidewalk curb and go right into my front yard. And there's no, it already goes from County Line into my front yard and anything that directs it further will give me a flooded front yard. Now, short of putting a sidewalk on my own house, which I don't intend to do, because I don't feel like shoveling in my 70s. And it's, it's just gonna be, it will make the, it will even make the aberration of the houses being so different worse. Because suddenly you'll have this big sign that says, "Development, look, there's a sidewalk, doesn't go anywhere." And it's just there, nobody else is ever gonna put a sidewalk along there because they're, the front yards are part of their landscaping. And the nuns on the corner have a big hill and beautiful trees along there, they're not about to do it. So there's never gonna be another sidewalk along County Line Road. On the Lower Marion's side, it's got utility poles. We'd like to have a sidewalk if it had been part of those houses developing and things, because I'm a walker, I walk around the neighborhood. But if you see the shape of some of the sidewalks that we have in our neighborhood, like along Railroad Avenue, it's not always a positive. So, and I know Chuck, you know this, because you're from the neighborhood. So this is going to be a real change for our neighborhood. Now granted, before there were two 1947 square brick houses there, one of which has been torn down for quite a few years. And they were different too, but they were so shodded in trees you didn't see them. So if we're looking along this, this lot number one here, there are six trees, including the cherry trees, several Norway maples, and according to this plan, they are all coming down. I have a fence and a privet hedge there, but that is not going to hide the house very much. I questioned why eight feet setback is a side yard setback. That does not look like the side of the house to me, it looks like the back of the house. Because the front, unless a garage constitutes a front yard, which it doesn't usually unless there's some, as you said, architectural flourish there. Having not seen a picture of the house, I wonder how it can be defined that it's a side yard setback when it's clear that the front of the house is actually on the side. So, and, you know, I clear, check with Kelly, it's, as a side yard, it's the setback, but eight feet from my house is pretty close. Nothing in the neighborhood is that close to another house. So we had hoped when this went for sale, some of the neighbors thought about getting together to purchase the property to assure that there would be, it could be sold to someone building a compatible house with the neighborhood, the quality of the neighborhood, which is historic in the sense, all built in 1905 by George Drexel, who was the developer at the time. And all backing, all having the same size lots and all backing, in fact, at one time there was a deed restriction that he had put on the properties. I don't think it exists any longer, but you'll notice they were all the same size. This is actually two lots made out of one. And I understand it's within the zoning code of the township, but I would hope that maybe something could be done to make them look a little bit more compatible to the neighborhood. Because now they look like something that doesn't belong on that street. So, and Joe knows I feel this way and he's probably built enough houses that a lot of neighbors complained, so I don't want to blindside him with that. We have talked about possibly saving a couple of those trees. Of course, they're all eight feet from my fence and almost all of them could be saved if it was only one house there. So trees grow back, I understand that. We put up green giants everywhere when this happens and try to get shields and things. Those are boring trees, but they do give you privacy. My deck is right next to where that deck is being proposed and my deck is back 12 feet from the property edge. So I'll be sitting out there looking right at somebody else's deck until we get a shield up. So I understand that this property was going to be developed at some point, knowing the history of the ownership and by the Bryn Mawr Foundation had owned it for 10 years and as soon as their 10 years were up, they were gonna sell it and they did. But it's, it's concerning that what came out, I was not here for most of the summer, I've missed all these hearings except this one. And finally got ahold of the plans and I was disconcerted to see how they had wound up. We thought there were going to be, I mean, I don't know what I thought, because I didn't really know. And I, and actually, most of the neighbors don't know. My neighbor Mia is, who lives on the other side of me, also in an old and historic era house. So that's my concern. The sidewalk is a big concern, because I'm gonna wind up with the front yard full of water, which I already have, this is gonna make it worse. I mean, when you say there are no storm sewers on County Line, there are no storm sewers on County Line. The thing's a river every time it rains. So water management, which I think Joe has learned when he's had to put all these basins and everything, is a huge problem. Everybody on that road has sump pumps in their basements, including, we have one too. And French drains and everything else. So anything that's gonna make this road more difficult, make it look different, which a sidewalk to nowhere would be. I don't know, we could probably get the neighborhood behind a petition to the Board of Commissioners to waive that requirement, because it really further sort of damages the view of the neighborhood and puts an unnecessary, there are beautiful, great big pines that are gonna be cut down along that road to accommodate that sidewalk. So essentially, all the old trees will go to have this sidewalk that'll serve no one. So that's my view of it. I understand that, you know, it's not my property and it's sad for me to have looked at the beautiful green for 42 years and to see it go and I'll be looking into the back of someone's house. But that's unlike pretty much everybody else on the street, because I'm the only one really affected, because I'm next door. There's a road between Diane Salter's house and this. And plus, the lot three is going to be, we assume, quite different. I think Joe plans to put stone facing on the brick, make that house look a little bit more like the rest of the houses on the street. So these two are the ones that are the issue, not lot three. And the sidewalk, which I'm really opposed to.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, and also thank you for making the effort to reach out to Joe and try to resolve some of these issues in advance, rather than, as you said, blindsiding. It's important that people try to work things out.
Well, he's gonna be my new neighbor, so, yes.
We appreciate that. And good, well. Yes, ma'am. Good fences make good neighbors. Could you explain, Kathy, what you meant by the setback issue?
You mean the setback from this side?
I have two questions, one, the setback on the side, and the second being, what kinds of discussion or arrangement might there be to save the, at least one or two of those old trees?
Well, number one, the, the trees are not exactly positioned on the drawing, where they actually are. They're a little bit too far forward, so there's a big Norway maple that really is not gonna be affected by the cashment base or the house that could possibly be saved and we talked about that. That's an old tree and it's in decent shape, a couple of the other ones are not in decent shape. I think the setback is eight feet, which is defined as a side yard setback and I would argue that's not really the side of the house, but is, is according to the code for R4. And that's not a lot of room to plant much of anything, because you've gotta get it away from the house and we have a fence there. So it's, that's my concern, because it's so close, it's closer than any house on that street is to any other house. I mean, I stuck, measuring stick through the fence and I thought, oh my gosh, it's practically on top of us. So that's what I meant by the setback issue, it was kind of shocking to me. But I hadn't seen these plans till fairly recently.
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mia Brower. I live next door to Kathy at 123 County Line Road. I'm going to be impacted, first of all, by the sight of these. In Bryn Mawr, which is known as being a little bit classier than some other places, we're putting in two twingles. That is the term for a twin-sized house that you're putting on a single lot. It is an actual term, at least in Philadelphia. To see it come out here is some very offensive. When I put an addition on my front porch about 15 years ago, I was told the setback on the side was 10 feet. And this had been the setbacks almost forever. As a matter of fact, to the point that when we got down to cutting the, setting the footers, the old footers were right there at 10 feet, not at any eight feet from the property line. So I'd like to know when it became eight feet instead of 10?
I'd be happy to answer that. So there's a minimum eight-foot setback in the R4 district. However, there's a 20-foot aggregate side yard setback. So that, each side yard added together has to add up to 20, but can be no smaller than eight. So it's very likely that in your situation, at your house, you have 10 feet on one side and 10 feet on the other and that's why you can't go any closer.
No, I have 10 feet on one side and about 22 feet on the other.
Well, then I, that you may be in a different zoning district, I can't imagine.
I'm in the same zoning district.
That's okay, but the fact of the matter is that what you're talking about, it's a 20-foot aggregate. So if you have eight on one side, you're gonna have 12 on the other.
Then this is.
You see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
So that's how that works. It can be 10 and 10, but it can't be eight and eight. So that's the overall. In R2, where I grew up, we had 10 feet on one side, but the other side, I believe, has to be 30 feet or 20 feet.
I think it's 20, I think it's a 30-foot aggregate.
So it's a 30-foot aggregate, okay? And as you step down, each time it gets bigger and bigger and bigger, more space in between. But then one side has been, ever since I've known, okay? Has been eight foot on R4 on one side. And then the other side has to pick up the difference so that if you measure that, you'll find the 12. I think I'm correct in that, Dennis, and that's what you have there, correct?
That's what I, I see there, but that is not what I was told many years ago by one of the township commissioners. But it could have been modified, I haven't kept up on.
It hasn't been modified in R4.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it hasn't, and I apologize, Mrs. Brower, it hasn't. Not, not in the, not in the 18 years or 16 years that I have been on the board, on this board, that we have not modified any of the side setbacks inside the township.
Okay. The other thing I have not, I don't fully see from a distance on there is the size of the retention basins and is it adequate? They have to be able to handle a storm such as we had this afternoon or worse. We have been getting more and more storms with climate change, they are heavier. And if these retention basins are not planned for what's coming in 10 or 20 years, we're going to have more and more flooding. I don't think because something, someone is building next door, that we should be penalized and we'll be penalized with this water runoff as it keeps coming down the street. And as Kathy pointed out, with a sidewalk there, it's going to make the runoff even worse. We have all tried, we had natural retention basins in the back of our properties. Even when I put an addition on, they had me put an additional water retention basement, basin. So I don't see, I don't believe these are adequate, they're more the bare minimum. And they should be looked at to be heavier or to be larger. That is another thing. And I would again appreciate they do something to the front of these properties to make them look attractive, for want of a better word. They should not, especially the two long, narrow, little, I call them twingles. They're not really a full-sized house. And they're being separated, as you said, by a driveway. If you put those two driveways together, you could have retention basins in the driveways and have, as you make them look more attractive, you could also at the same time help solve some of the water problems that I know we're going to have. You wanna see, it's dug now, there's about eight or 10 inches of topsoil and then clay. Clay does not absorb very well. I don't know what the Perk test showed, maybe it was on a hot, dry day that they were done. But I hope this gets addressed beforehand and that we're not stuck with things that later can't be changed and we regret them for 10 years.
Thank you so much, Frau. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? If we pass this, make, make a recommendation for this to be accepted with the modification as proposed by the township engineer and to meet the needs of the township engineer. Can we also put in a recommendation that there is a consideration that the sidewalk out in front of those two, three properties? out in front of those two, three properties, we would strongly recommend that the township gives them a waiver from having to put those in, and if the Board of Commissioners choose to put it in, that's okay. I, I think the entire board here is, is in favor of, Kathy, in favor of what you were talking about. Am I correct in saying that? Okay? So if we could do that, that would...
No, 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 no. Sidewalks are important.
You want the sidewalk?
I think, I think that it is important that we do install sidewalks along the way. Saying that we, I, Kelly said that the Board, the Board of Commissioners has been adamant about installing sidewalks. I hate the idea that it's a sidewalk to nowhere. I would rather see it be extended, or at least have a termination at the street, so that it's not just a chunk of concrete in there. I also wish that there, it wasn't taking out a bunch of trees, but I also see that we're replacing those trees with some nice trees, which will, in the long term, improve the neighborhood. But I think I would disagree with, given the Board of Commissioners, that we would recommend a waiver on the sidewalk in front.
Okay.
I'd also like to make a suggestion, because, so I, I walk along this roadway, I live right on the other side of Polo Field. The, the shoulder area that you're talking about is on the west side of the road, so there isn't much of a shoulder area on your side, correct?
The opposite, I mean, it's not a shoulder area, it's a, it's County Line Road, there's an extra pavement, it's in front of my house, and, and further off too, but not if the two houses right at night, two home lines, but that's it. Most houses are open.
Right, okay. So I guess, I guess maybe what I would like to potentially recommend, or maybe just put on the table for the Planning Commission to consider is, if we have significant community concerns about the installation of curbing and sidewalk at this time, especially when we don't have any plans for future connections, would it be possible then for the applicant to still include a written easement for the sidewalk, include all of the legal documentation that we would need to come in and put a sidewalk in later, not install it at this time, and then that would give us the option, have the plantings located in a way that they wouldn't be disturbed by the future installation of the sidewalk, but create it in a way that we would have an easement instead, instead of the actual construction, until such time as it's determined by the residents of the street, that there could be a coordinated effort to install sidewalks at a later date? Is that something that the Planning Commission?
We, we have done that in the past, specifically for Pets First on Havford Road. I can, we can certainly, if the Planning Commission elects to recommend that, that version, we can certainly do that. I can even offer the, try that again, the Board of Commissioners, an alternate resolution, and that way they can kind of, we can kind of see where they want to land with it, if, you know, if they want to, if they're open to, you know, that idea, they can approve that one, and that way we're not, you know, backing anything up any further. So, that's certainly an option.
And Kelly, would it be, would it be possible as well to ask for some sort of payment towards the installation of the sidewalk, so that it's not the financial burden of the township or the property owners in the future, but that there be some sort of, again, fee in lieu, or something held in escrow, to be contributed towards the township? I don't know if it would go towards like general trails development, or if it would be held in reserve specifically for this property, or some other sort of financial agreement, to, to ensure that if and when the sidewalk does get installed, not only do we have the easements, but we have some sort of financial guarantee?
That does make things a little bit more complicated, only because I don't know, well, the finance department is constantly asking me if they can close out accounts that are, development is currently active, much less holding an account for 100 years possibly. And I certainly don't want to make Mr. Falcone, or whomever, hold a letter of credit, or something along those lines, and have to continually renew it. It's something that we could look into, I suppose, but I think that will become maybe lost years from now, if and when, you know, future properties are developed, and kind of puts whomever, maybe, in this position, you know, in a confusing situation.
Right, okay, so then, if, I don't know if we're ready to make a motion, but I would have an amendment, or not an amendment, but I would have an idea for a motion, at least in regards to the sidewalk.
I, I, I think that your, your comment about is, 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 do you have a problem? Do you guys see a problem with this? If you don't have to put the sidewalk in at this point in time, and, but you do leave the easement, is that going to be a, a problem for you, sir?
No, we could leave the easement in. As far as the payment, like Kelly said, that would be...
I understand.
...the kind of things to try and do, but...
That way it would keep it, you keep it in line with what's already there in the community, would make the community look better, and, and we can make that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners ultimately will make that decision, we won't.
Could I also suggest that we are going to do that, make it a deed restriction, so it is, or recorded in some way?
Yeah, so it's going to be recorded on the deeds of each and every property.
In the language of the easement, or in the deed itself, that the sidewalk would need to be constructed if it is continued down, and that way, future homeowners are aware of it when they do like a title search and things like that.
Right, so if the property is sold in the future, it's going to carry along, carry on to the next, and subsequent owners in the future? So, let's, I'll entertain a motion if somebody has one to, would you like to do that, Maggie, so that you know it's done the way you want it, to make sure that's all right?
I'll, I'll attack this. Okay, so I make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary final land development plan for the property at 111 to 115 East County Line Road. Contingent on the, contingent upon meeting all of the outstanding review comments from the engineer's review letter, and upon, what were the other things we said?
That, go ahead and do your sidewalk bit.
Okay, and then, and then, and contingent upon modifications to the plan, to recommend to the Commissioners to grant the waiver for sidewalk and curbing, provided that there is a deed restricted easement in perpetuity for the future construction of said improvements, and I would also add a fee in lieu of the construction cost to be dedicated to the township, Am I blanking on everything else?
No, I think...
I think that, I think, I think that helps.
But I, I don't think we can do the fee. I don't think that we can ask for a fee.
Would the Planning, would the Planning Commission not support the fee?
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we can get that fee, I don't think...
It's the Board.
It's a recommended...
The Board of Commissioners' problem, so I think we ought to leave that alone, and they can work that part out.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't believe that we have, that our streets and sidewalks ordinance allows for a fee in lieu of construction?
Okay, so I will strike that then from the, the recommendation. So then, if I can, I apologize, so if I can summarize, so the recommendation would be to recommend approval of the preliminary final, in accordance with the Township Engineer Review Letter, with the waivers requested, and with the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to grant a waiver from the sidewalk and curbing, provided there is a permanent deed restricted easement for the future construction of the sidewalk. Period.
And I would like to also mention that since you're going with the fee in lieu of for the open space in the back, that you, when you complete the new plan, that all of the changes that we recommended are on the plans and will be part of the filed plans that go to the county. I have a motion, do I have a second? Second. Okay. Sorry, people, it's, can I get you to call the roll, please, ma'am?
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori de Mondo?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
So, we are, you are, you are going to go back to the planning, going back to the shade tree commission to get the final approval with the shade tree commission, and then you will be on the board, that you will go before the board when? Thank you, Dennis.
I think that there's a holiday somewhere in October, I want to say it's October 12.
Okay. So you will be able to go there then. I would recommend to the community, okay, that in order for this particular thing to work, that you need to organize the community as a group, and get everybody to sign off on this, so that they are seeing that it is a, that it is a collective effort. And I want to thank both of you ladies for coming tonight, speaking. I think that takes care of everything, except we need to do a thank you. We have a review of the minutes from the last meeting, has anybody, I was not here for the last meeting, so I will, if, if anybody wants to make a recommendation, that the minutes be approved, it needs to be from somebody who is here in a second, and then we can vote on, unless somebody has some changes they wish to make.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
To show that I'm sane, because I wasn't here, but otherwise, that is approved. I will accept a move, somebody please ask for a...
Motion to close the meeting.
Thank you. Second?
Go second, dude.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you for putting up with my less than stellar performance, I apologize.
I think you should do it more often.